Thank you very much. Being 6 o'clock on Monday, March 25th, I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and I'd like to announce that this presentation will be broadcast and filmed and available for review at 1623 Studios, usually in about two to three days. First, on our agenda, I'm going a little bit out of order because I see people in the room that are here for particular things. We have until 6:05 to accomplish some generic business. I'm first gonna go to the one-day wine and malt licenses. I will entertain a motion to approve the Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., Jane Rumril, 82 Eastern Ave., for use on Friday, June 14th, 2024, between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 8:30 p.m.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have three one-day wine and malt licenses for Guggan's Galley, Kimberly St. Ange, one Martin Street, for use on Wednesday, April 17th, between the hours of 4:00 and 8:00 p.m., Wednesday, May 1st, between the hours of 4:00 and 8:00 p.m., and Wednesday, May 29th, between the hours of 4:00 and 9:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One-day entertainment licenses. I have Rivers Bend. There are five of them, so I'm gonna take these one at a time because they, some of them are slightly different than others.
Thanks.
So, the first one is Rivers Bend and Essex Marina LLC. Kirkper's run for use on Friday, May 10th, 2024, between the hours of 4:15 and 5:15 p.m., within the confines of Rivers Bend Lawn, 35 Dodge Street. Wedding ceremony with mic deficient and music via Bluetooth speaker. Is there any discussion on that?
What was the date on that?
That one is the very first Rivers Bend, May 10th.
May 10th.
This is, so, we do have a policy in place that talks about outdoor amplified music, and it does, it's at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, but there is a policy in place. This has been allowed for the last couple of summers, I think relatively successfully. Board members have been okay with it, and we've received no complaints, so...
I will move that.
Second?
Peter, actually, can you make that motion, and then Alva, will you second it?
Please.
So, we'll just show it as Peter making the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And Alva, you're gonna second it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm gonna recuse. The next license is Rivers Bend and Essex Marina LLC. Kirkper's run for use on Saturday, June 22nd, 2024, between the hours of 4:15 and 5:15 p.m., within the confines of Rivers Bend Lawn, 35 Dodge Street. Wedding ceremony and mic deficient and music via Bluetooth speaker.
Moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recuse. Next is Rivers Bend and Essex Marina LLC. Kirkper's run for use on Saturday, June 29th, 2024, between the hours of 4:15 and 5:15 p.m., within the confines of the Rivers Bend Lawn, 35 Dodge Street. Wedding ceremony and mic deficient and music ceremony via Bluetooth speaker.
Moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recuse. Rivers Bend and Essex Marina LLC. Kirkper's run for use on Friday, September 20th, 2024, between the hours of 4:15 and 5:15 p.m., within the confines of Rivers Bend Lawn, 35 Dodge Street. Mic deficient, bride and groom for wedding ceremony, music via Bluetooth speaker, amplified singer, and guitar played during ceremony. So this one is slightly different in that it's not just the Bluetooth speaker that's been traditionally allowed for the last couple of seasons successfully. This now has an amplified singer and a guitar player during the ceremony. So that's discussion if there's any.
I mean, it sounds like it's the same thing, just live music as opposed to recorded music. It is for only a short duration within that hour or hour of the ceremony, so I don't have a problem with it.
Same.
Peter, do you want to move that?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm gonna recuse. And the last one is Rivers Bend and Essex Marina LLC. Kirkper's run for use on Saturday, September 28th, 2024, between the hours of 4:15 and 7:30 p.m., within the confines of Rivers Bend tented area, 35 Dodge Street. Wedding ceremony music via Bluetooth speaker, mic deficient, acoustic amplified guitar singer for a few songs, acoustic singer guitar under a tent with Bluetooth speaker.
So, this is not a tented area permitted?
So, this is slightly different in that it's, a tent is very specifically called out in the application.
Yes.
The difference with this, the lawn, they have a special kind of wedding knoll where the ceremonies generally take place, which we list as lawn ceremony.
Yeah.
And then this is tented area. So, the only issue here is if you want to make a motion, I would just state, if you're willing to approve it with the hours of 4:15 to 7:30, which is slightly longer, generally you've been approving an hour, so this is three hours and 15 minutes, and it's under a tent. I would just make sure that your motion is contingent upon receiving a building permit from the Building Department for the tent, but Rivers Bend knows that.
I will move that.
It looks like Lindsay actually wants to speak to that.
Yeah, sorry. So, the first, there's two parts of this. So, the first part is the ceremony, 4:15 to 5:15, and that's in the lawn. Ceremony music via Bluetooth speaker, mic deficient, the normal request. And then the second half of this is from 6:15 to 7:30, an acoustic singer guitar player under the tent via Bluetooth speaker.
We're just grabbing that application, Lindsay. Peter, that should be...
There's two applications?
Just on the second page of the application, that will be spelled out in the lines there that it says, please describe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, and this can be treated as one application?
One event.
One event.
One event, yes.
I think she was just simply saying that it's not three hours and 15 minutes, it's actually two blocks, one hour, and then an hour and, hour and 15.
Yeah.
Yes, as you said, as long as there's a building permit, I'm fine with that.
So, Peter's motion is to approve it contingent upon receiving a building permit from the Building Department.
Yes.
I'm sorry, the tent permit?
The tent permit.
Yeah, we have a, we have a, we can, our tent can go up and down within four days.
After you receive the permit, Lindsay?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Well, actually, hold, so, no, so we have been granted, if we put a tent on that lawn, it just has to go up and down within four days.
With a building permit.
Is that new?
No. It's, tents are required, tents require a building permit. It's a short-form building permit application.
Okay.
So, just take a look on the online permitting, click on it. If you have questions, chat with Bill.
Yeah.
I know that you guys come in and see them on Wednesdays.
Yes. And then, I'm sorry, before, you can finish this, but then there was something that was left off of one of the other applications.
Which date?
It was June 29th.
And what did we miss, Lindsay?
So, it was wedding ceremony, mic deficient, ceremony via Bluetooth speaker, but they would like singers for the processional blessing song and recessional.
And is that amplified?
Just to be safe, yes, but it might not be.
And that's like a matter of minutes?
Minutes.
Yeah.
Does that spell that out in that application?
It does. It says singers are for processional blessing song, recessional.
So, do you want to just amend the motion on that particular one?
Sure, amend the motion to include that.
Okay. And now, we're in the middle of the motion on the other one that's contingent upon receiving a building permit from the Building Department, so you've made that motion.
Yep.
Alva, did you second that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm gonna recuse. Lindsay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I wish you a very successful summer season.
Thank you. Hopefully, some less rain.
Thank you. Okay. My apologies to the transfer of application. Let me actually grab that folder, bear with me.
And they all came out of there, I think.
I think I need those.
Yes.
Did I already sign those?
I don't know.
Can I please ask for the transfer of license folder?
Looking for...
The transfer of license for the all alcohol?
Oh, the license. That's it.
For...
Thick folder there?
I don't know what that is. It's got no stickies on it.
Thank you.
I think he signed these. No, he didn't. Okay. So, those go in that, at the end.
I am. Being 6:10 p.m., my apologies for running late. I am going to entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the transfer of all alcohol license from 201 Chabaco Market, Inc., to... Transfer of annual all alcohol package store license from Chabaco Liquor Mart, Inc., John D. Chisholm, manager at 201 Western Ave., to 201 Chabaco Market, Inc., Anne Kitabon Patel, manager.
What's going on?
This is just opening the public hearing.
Sure, so moved.
Alva?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Attorney... True? TrueX. TrueX, if you'd like to join us at the podium?
Sure, thank you.
With your client and just give us a little bit of information, background. These are the three applicants.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Tom Truex. I'm an attorney in Salem, Massachusetts, 530 Loring Avenue in Salem. With me, I'm gonna introduce everyone. This is, to my immediate right, is Hareesh Kumar Patel. He's the president of the corporation. And to his right is Kunch Patel. He's the treasurer?
Treasurer.
Treasurer of the corporation. And next to him is Ankeeta Ben Patel. She's the director of the corporation, as well as the proposed license manager before you. The underlying transaction is fairly straightforward. This is a sale of assets and a sale of the real estate. So, it's a whole kit and caboodle that's being transferred here and sold here to the buyers. The package includes all the purchase and sale agreement paperwork. There's also a component of bank financing. So, Rockland Trust is the financing, is providing financing on this transaction. They're providing 80% financing, as is typical with Rockland Trust and most banks. They require approval of a pledge of license and of the inventory, so they'd be asking this board to approve that as collateral for their loan that they're providing. As for experience, I'll go through each of them. Mr. Patel, Mr. Hareesh Kumar Patel, he is currently the owner of four package stores in the greater Boston area. He has over five years of experience in this business. And as I said, he owns a package store. He owns a full liquor store in Brighton, Massachusetts. So, in terms of analogy between Chabaco and his store, he has one that's almost identical, even bigger store in Brighton. His other three stores, one in Cambridge, one in Brookline, and the other one is in, oh, Newton, right. Those are a little bit different. One is a large package store, but a large supermarket, that's Newton. The package stores in Cambridge and in Brookline are more convenience slash package stores, selling beer and wine. His full liquor license is the one that's in Newton.
Full liquor license.
Full liquor license in Newton and in Brighton. As for Kunch Patel, he comes before you with three years of experience working in package store business. He's worked, he's working at, he has worked at package stores in Cambridge and in Gloucester. And Ankeeta Ben, she comes before you with about four years of experience in the package store business. She currently works at Ed's Mini Mart in Gloucester, where she's the assistant manager, has been that since, I believe, 2020. They're, all three of them are TIPS certified. I have the certifications here if they need them. So, they come before you with a lot of experience. In terms of the store itself, though, there is an added component. This store has a point-of-sale system, which a lot of stores do, but specifically, this store has a point-of-sale system where any item that is a alcohol item, any item that is a tobacco item, will automatically, once it's scanned, it brings up, ask for ID. And so, you can't close out the sale without having IDing, being produced. So, they all are aware of this through their TIPS training. The big thing I always make sure I'm aware, they are aware of, is that, and they've been taught this in the courses as well, you don't just look at the ID for date of birth. You look at the ID to make sure that the physical characteristics match the person in front of you. Weight, if you've got a five-foot-two person in front of you, but the license says six-foot-zero, you got a problem. If you have a male in front of you, the license is a female, you got a problem. You gotta match, you gotta use common sense, and they understand that. They've had, you know, another thing is they've all had clean records, so you've got quite about 10, 15 years of experience with no violations whatsoever. And again, as I said, to make sure the picture on the ID matches up, just common sense things. You know, they know, and I always stress that with my clients. The main thing with any liquor store, any package store is, is ID, ID, ID. So, even in the stores, Ankeeta Ben used to work at a convenience store for about 10 years, but you still have tobacco ID. So, the concept is still the same. So, there's a lot of experience between tobacco ID, liquor ID, all between, all three of them. As for the store operation, pretty much gonna remain the same. There'll be a general cleanup of the store, but in terms of operation, they're retaining one of the two employees. The other employee is one of the owners, I believe. So, one of the owners, one of the employees is staying, so there'll be some continuity in terms of knowing the customers and what have you, which is a good thing. Operation of store hours will remain the same, and the store layout is remaining the same. So, it's pretty much a turnkey operation in the sense that what you see now is what you're gonna get. You're gonna see a change of owners, and you're gonna see a change in management, but other than that, the operation of the store is pretty much gonna remain the same. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. So, I just want to commend you on this application. I've, in my five years, I've seen a lot of licenses, and this is the most complete, thorough, and perfect application I've ever seen, and trust me, I go through these with a fine-toothed comb, and there's not even a spelling mistake on here, so this is, this is fabulous to review. I think this has been thorough and complete, and everything checks out. I know that we have the quarry checks that were done in here, as well as the town ones that checked out perfectly. No violations, as you said, everything is in perfect order, so I personally have no questions, but actually just a, some gratitude for such a wonderful application.
My only question is, will the food service still remain, the preparation of sandwiches?
We've talked about that.
Yep, it'll be same.
And what sort of permit is that? Is that just a border health?
That's gonna be part of that health. Yeah, we have to get like some certificate and all this stuff.
Comment Vic and a retail food, or food establishment.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No, my only question was gonna be on violations, and if there's none, there's none. Good.
So, this is a public hearing, even though generally with the transfer of license, we don't take public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions? Since we are a public hearing, I'm happy to take anything from the audience. No? Anybody online? No? Okay, hearing, no public comment at a public hearing, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer of the all alcohol license. Bear with me, my apologies. From Chabaco Liquor Mart, Inc., John D. Chisholm, manager at 201 Western Ave., to 201 Chabaco Market, Inc., Anne Kitabon Patel, manager.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And signatures?
We're also gonna need the board to make a vote on the pledge of license as well.
Oh, yes.
Pledge of license and inventory.
What is it? I didn't hear what you said.
Pledge of license and inventory, and that's for the finance, financing of the project. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the enclosed pledge and inventory, which is enclosed in the application.
So moved.
I sent it over?
Yep.
Do you want to second that, Alva?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set. Thank you, and I wish you great success.
Thank you very much. Thank you, good luck. Thank you, good night.
See you soon.
Oh, yes, is he here? Mr. Marshall, would you like to join us at the podium, please?
Yeah.
Yes, and his license is in a folder in front of Alva and Peter, so I'll, if those are all set, I will take those, and I'm gonna have Brendan just give us a little bit of history about why Mr. Marshall is before us this evening.
This is the one we didn't sign yet. Yes. All right, we're gonna sign.
So, Dan Marshall is here. He puts his commercial clamming license application in each year, and it gets checked against various things that are required. In past years, we're not sure why this hadn't been flagged, but it was flagged this year. Mr. Marshall lives with his partner, and she owns the real estate, but he's obviously a permanent guest of his partner, and therefore, he neither has a... Lease agreement. A lease agreement or his name being on the, on the real estate. So, when we have a situation like this, the regulations indicate the Board of Selectmen may, in their sole discretion, accept other articles or confirmations as proof of residency in extenuating circumstances. Now, I believe, Mr. Marshall, you've come with other forms of...
Yes, well, I brought a pistol permit, which is this issued or checked out security by the chief, by the chief of police in Essex itself, plus the FBI...
With your address on it.
To verify that that's where I live.
Yep.
So...
So, does the board want him to approach?
Yes, please approach, Mr. Marshall. We'll just take a look at that.
Okay. And it looks like you have an excise bill there, too.
Perfect. Which you did actually provide the driver's license when you did the original application. Okay, I'm gonna just pass those. And the registration, actually, we, these are excise bills.
Registration he has.
Yes.
Yeah. That's just another form of...
Okay.
Of residency.
Sure, so there's plenty of... Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. So, the board, you can step back to the podium, and we'll just have a quick discussion. So, this is at our sole discretion for approval, and so the board will recall that this actually has come, this application came before us at our last meeting.
Yep.
And we sent it back to the town clerk because we didn't have proof of residency. We had asked for lease. Town administrator Zubraki has explained why there is no lease, which makes perfect sense, and it's at our sole discretion to approve. We've just seen evidence that he certainly is a resident of the town of Essex, and he's been doing this for a number of years. So, is, I would entertain a motion to approve the commercial shellfish license for Mr. Dan Marshall, and it's not on our agenda this evening, so if we take this motion to approve it, we would have to ratify this at our next meeting.
Okay.
But approving it this evening would not hold him up from continuing after the April 1st deadline.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall, thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You can, you can come in tomorrow to see the town clerk, okay? Thank you.
Here, Ruth. Here, I'll put that in with these.
Do you need?
Oh, the signed one? I'll put it in, oh, does Pam have it already? Oh.
Okay.
Here's this package then.
Since we're dealing with licenses, I will entertain a motion to approve the commercial shellfish licenses as listed.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the gravel pit permit for Curly Cove Realty.
So moved.
Was it always there?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant, the amount of $228,614.42.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant, the amount of $228,614.42.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the minutes from the Selectmen's February 28th, 2024, in the March 11th, 2024, open meeting.
Can I, since I wasn't at the last meeting?
If, if the board agrees to approve it, you can sign it, but you don't have to vote on it.
Okay.
Sign it as clerk.
Did you read it?
So then, I will, I will make the motion instead of entertaining, I will make the motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's February 28th and March 11th meeting, and you can second that.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We received a request from John Perrigo to rent the cottage at Centennial Grove to host a celebration of life for Connie Perrigo in May or June of 2024. So, this is on the agenda, obviously, because last summer, there was construction going on at Centennial Grove, which there is still construction going on over there, but this is at the cottage, not necessarily in the area, the big area of the Grove. I'm assuming, based on the fact that they want the cottage, that there's probably not a large number of attendees coming. Do we, did we get a number of attendees or a rough estimate?
And he doesn't have a date yet?
So, it just says, please place on the agenda for 3/25 Selectmen's, meaning our request to rent the cottage at Centennial Grove to hold a celebration of life for Connie Perrigo in May or June of 2024. Thank you, John Perrigo.
My understanding from talking to him is that it could be around 80 to 100 people.
Does the cottage hold 80 to 100 people?
It does if you include the porch and the grounds. I mean, it would be warm weather.
But this is specifically requesting the cottage and not the other area that's under construction.
Right, because, exactly, because we have no idea when that's going to be finished, and that fencing's gonna be down, and, you know, so there's another one on here that you'll talk about next, that I don't...
Correct.
For the pavilion.
Yeah.
Right. So, my only question, I mean, even 80 people, and I think that there probably will be a good-sized crowd there, do we approve it with, like, I don't think that the cottage bathroom would be able to sustain 80 people.
No, they'll, they'll need to bring in portable sanitation.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was thinking.
And that should, you know, that, I was going to recommend that as part of the vote.
Is there, there's no work going on with the garage or the building at all there now?
No, we, we had plans to do that, but when the grant maker told us that they weren't funding building work anymore, we focused only on the Picnic Grove area.
Yep, yep. Okay. And what's the fee?
Pam, I believe that's $200, or is it four for the cottage? We have it in our...
Yeah, I don't remember.
It's 400. It's 400 for the cottage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, for the discussion? Do we wait till we get dates, or are we fine with...
Well, they first wanted to know whether you would even entertain it. And again, that area is not scheduled for construction like we thought it might. So, sure, we could get a full application in front of the board now that they know that it makes sense. We can bring that to you in April.
So, I was going to say, so why don't we bring this back? We'll table it with the under... Well, I guess, let me do a straw poll, though, because I want to see where we all stand.
I think we're okay.
I'm comfortable with it being at the cottage, specifically because I am worried about the liability down where the construction is. But I am fine with this. It looks like we're all on the same page.
It's just, yeah, we'd like to have a date because somebody else could want the same day.
Okay.
You know, but so the first comes first.
So, if we could table that to 4/8 and get more information on date? Perfect.
And also, as far as, like, parking? Because even though they... You couldn't put 80 cars at the Grove and then still have 80 people there? Or even 40 cars?
No, they would have to walk from the baseball parking to make sure that the dates don't conflict.
Right, and they'll get parking permits. So, when someone rents it, we give them something that they give out to their guests, put on the dashboard.
We have two minutes. I think we can do this. We also received a request from Christine Nielsen to rent the pavilion at Centennial Grove for July 5th or 6th, 2024. After the last discussion we just had, I think it's evident that, you know, there's still construction going on up at the Grove. There is an open hole. There will be. It's fenced in. There's quite a bit of mud.
Probably a tight tank going to be...
There's a tight tank going in. So, we're going to have more excavators and more digging. I think that we're a little premature to be opening up the Grove to rentals at this point. That's just my opinion. So, I'm not going to be in favor of this.
What was the number? I thought the number was really small for this one.
I think what they said is it was their 20-year anniversary.
Party was 35.
Yeah, that's... I thought it was 30.
But they want to use the pavilion. And if they're still doing construction and they have lumber in there.
Yeah, no, I mean, my feeling would be, no, the pavilion is probably going to still have too much construction around it. But with 35, you know, did they want the...
The cottage.
Cottage.
So, we could offer that. Yeah, we could offer the cottage. So, their letter is very nice. It says, "Dear Miss Witham, our son and daughter-in-law were married in Gloucester 20 years ago. This summer, we are having a family reunion to celebrate. Do you have the ability to host a party, 35 people, July 5th or 6th? Is the pavilion still available? Your location was recommended to us by our caterer, Woodman's of Essex." So, I think offering the cottage would be great, and that can come back to us if they like that.
There's no chance that the pavilion will be closed up or anything by then?
It's not that it would be closed up or not. They're waiting for the roofing at this point. So, they were waiting for the warmer weather so that when they put on the metal roofing, that we didn't have any shifting. So, that's...
All right.
So...
Which one is it?
Offer the cottage.
We'll offer the cottage.
This one? Essex Park?
Yes.
Click on that.
Okay. And we have 6:30, so I know that Mr. Pillsbury is getting ready to do the presentation.
That's going to come up on here. I think share with everybody in the group. You can full-size that. And I'm going to plug you in. Oh, the HD's over here. How much time do we have? Switch glasses. Well, I like to do it in half hour, but I can't even more. The next thing is not until 7:30.
Okay.
Let's just make sure this comes up correctly, and we'll get you going.
This is my call.
Yet it's... We'll introduce you.
Okay. Do that. Is this all taken care of?
I yelled it.
Yeah, I'll sit up.
Sometimes you have to tell it to...
Are you signed? Yeah, just going to go to roof. Do you want me to shut?
Yeah.
Okay. Which is here, this thing here.
Pam, here you go.
It's going to be functioning this. If it's not, it doesn't see it. Escape for a second. Go to here.
So, I was telling them, I had like nine months worth of papers from here. UPS over in Commodore Plaza, they have a shred of bid.
Oh.
That it's Mountain. It's not handled by UPS. It's Mountain.
Yeah.
Who... So, just FYI if you have...
It's free?
Free.
Wow.
Doesn't come up.
Where is this going to...
As you want.
It's just the one where you want to send it both screens? Isn't that an F? Isn't that an F?
Over to Commodore Plaza.
Oh, okay.
Next door to...
Do you want...
Yeah, I hit it before.
Long place.
This is good.
Really? I have a stack. I have three stacks of stuff.
I had a stack this night. And so, I went in there.
It's okay, because some computers...
My company had sent me a box.
Did you get that?
You don't have more than one.
Was those popcorn?
No, just one.
They sent one to me, so they sent me another one.
So, go ahead and bring it back up this whole side. The audience can see that.
And so, somebody said, "Oh, I heard UPS will take it." Well, they only recycle it.
Little shredder.
They'll take the popcorn from you.
Oh, wow.
So, that's nice.
Yeah. Yeah, that's just a pain in the ass. But, um...
It's sad that they can't reuse it, but I understand.
It was showing. Did it unshare? Might have to reshare.
I didn't realize it was a field dump up there.
Yeah, there's a couple more.
That's okay. We'll reshare it. I don't know what happened.
It's been ages. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Make it full-size when it comes on. Can you? Is that going to show? We did share it.
Showing it. It's showing a little box on the bottom.
Yeah, for whatever reason, it's not showing it full-size.
I make it full-size here. Will that help?
Well, it's showing it in this little box. That's okay.
It serves that.
Here we go. Okay.
31.
You'll just have to find one, yeah? So, I'm going to introduce Martin Pillsbury of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Martin has been helping the town of Essex update its hazard mitigation plan. That's a plan that is required by the federal government if the town is to participate in federal, certain federal grants in the future. This will be the third iteration of the town's hazard mitigation plan. I believe our first version was in 2012, and then it was 2018?
19.
2019? And now, this will be the 2024 or even 2025 version. The federal government requires periodic updates, and we normally enlist the help of MAPC. So, Martin, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much, Brented. So, hazard mitigation plans don't roll off the tongue, and they're not a household word for most folks. You're probably familiar with master plans, comprehensive plans, open space plans. However, every town in the region does have these plans, and they're hopefully becoming a little more visible, and people are becoming a little more aware of them because they really do cover very important topics around natural hazards and their impacts, and what towns can do to prepare for them. So, why a hazard mitigation plan? Well, basically, as Brented just began to mention, it's part of a FEMA program nationwide. An act was passed by the Congress, Federal Act, back in 2000 called the Disaster Mitigation Act. And it set out a program with the goal of having a hazard mitigation plan of this sort in every single municipality in the country. In some cases, they're done, in some states, by the counties. But here in Massachusetts, we do things town by town. And so, all the communities in this area have a plan of this sort. And in fact, they do need to be updated in order to be... For FEMA to consider them current and for the town to be eligible for some pretty potentially significant grants. So, that's kind of a background of how this comes to be. What do these plans have in them? What are they all about? Well, first of all, when you hear FEMA, you think of all kinds of hazards and emergencies. These are natural hazards. So, this does not cover human-caused hazards. It does not cause things like, you know, nuclear meltdowns or chemical spills or homeland security sort of issues. There's whole other parts of FEMA that deal with those, and there's other plans. In fact, the town has what's called a comprehensive emergency management plan that would deal with some of those issues if you had it, like a chemical spill. This deals with all categories of natural hazards. However, you see on the list on the right, things like flooding, which is one of the most common in this area, high-wind events, winter hazards, geologic hazards, even hazards that are less likely to happen, but in theory, they could. So, the plan will cover all of these hazards and look at what the town's exposure might be to these, and then what kinds of mitigation the town can have. The whole idea is finding ways to reduce the impacts of these natural events on the community. The crux of these plans is in the lower left of the screen. We ask these two questions. What preventative actions are being taken now to reduce these risks? Because the town has lived with these risks for decades, and it's not as if you're not doing anything. You have lots of things in place to help you. But what... Then the second question, what additional actions can you take to become more resilient? And what are some of the more current models that you can follow and that sort of thing that will make the town more resilient? So, that's kind of the goal of a plan like this, to help the community think about what its exposure are. At the national level, this program came about because FEMA was seeing, especially with repetitive losses of flood sites, a tendency for there to be an almost endless cycle of a, you know, disaster, tearing down something, rebuilding it, paying for having it rebuilt, and then having it only, you know, worn down again by another disaster event. And so, FEMA was interested in breaking this cycle or at least slowing down this cycle and interrupting this cycle. And to do that, hazard mitigation really is made up of a number of different techniques and methods that a community can use. It's not one thing. It's kind of an overall umbrella term. We've sort of, following FEMA and MIMA, Mass Emergency Management, sort of guidelines, we sort of lay out some of the components that can go into hazard mitigation that you see here. So, prevention would be like, how can you stay out of harm's way to begin with by the way you zone and plan your development, avoiding those areas that may be known to be hazardous? How can you protect property that's already in the floodplain or already in a hazard zone? Because we've had development patterns here that go back literally to the 1600s and 1700s. Much of the development pattern back then didn't really know or have maps to say what was hazardous, and we end up putting property in places that we now know are hazards. And what can we do to retrofit those properties? Like, building elevations, elevating utilities in basements and that sort of thing. Public education is a component of hazard mitigation because it's not just what the town can do or the state can do. It's also what individual residents and small business owners can do to help be aware of their risks and manage their own risks and take steps to be more protected. So, we want to make sure that it's not just only a function of the municipality, but in fact, we're involving the community. Protecting natural resources, you know, things like wetlands and floodplains come to mind when we think about flooding because of the function they have to essentially be a buffer, to essentially be, I like to say, Mother Nature's own protection. We nowadays use terms like green infrastructure to talk about this. But basically, it's letting the natural functions do what they can do and don't interrupt them by the way those resources might be managed. Finally, structural projects. These would be infrastructure drainage-type projects, seawalls, and that sort, and the like, in places where you do have to have something more robust to manage an impact. And we have a lot of infrastructure, not just in Essex, but in all the communities and all the states, which is older, which may not be fitting the bill currently. And as our hazards become more severe, maybe things that were designed for 40 or 50 years ago are actually now kind of out of date and no longer adequate. So, looking at what could be done to reinforce and make our infrastructure more robust and more resilient, which could involve some pretty expensive projects for infrastructure upgrades. And that's where these FEMA grants could come in because they will fund certain of these kinds of projects. There are also nowadays a few other sources of money for these kinds of projects that there weren't in the past. Like, even at the state level, the municipal vulnerability preparedness grants can, in some cases, do this. And they will often focus approaches to this that bring in natural approaches, that bring in green infrastructure as part of that. Finally, emergency services protection. So, this is not an emergency response plan, but this is about thinking about the facilities that you have in town that you rely on, that you call on when there is an emergency, to make sure those facilities themselves are protected, that they are resilient. The last thing you want is that, you know, the fire or police or emergency center goes out in a flood, and then they can't help anyone else in the town. And we have had towns where those facilities have been in harm's way and where they flooded or had other impacts. And so, that's like a high priority. I like to say, this is a little bit like the... What they tell you on an airplane, put your own mask on first so that you can help everyone around you. And it's like, make sure you still have very, very robust facilities for these service folks who really help the rest of the community. So, that's a broad view of the kinds of things that we talk about with hazard mitigation. And, you know, I wouldn't have said this 15 years ago because people weren't talking about it then. But really, now we know that the kinds of hazard mitigation that we're talking about also involves thinking forward, not just looking backwards. We look backwards to the history of how many floods we've had and where it's flooded in the past. That's one indication of what your risks are. But another indication would be, what might that be in the future? And how might that be different in the future because of the changes in precipitation, the changes in temperature that's coming at us? And so, there's a lot of overlap between the issues we talk about traditionally in hazard mitigation and what is increasingly being looked at in climate resilience planning. And really, where you'll see in this plan, we're beginning to start to marry those two together. The state is doing the same thing in Massachusetts in their state-level plan. There is also a state-level plan doing this very kind of thing for the whole Commonwealth. In fact, they just published their latest five-year update in 2023, and it fully integrates climate into their... In the aspects of how climate might affect these hazards. And you'll see more of that in your plan here than you did maybe in your previous plan from five and 10 years ago. So, for this, putting this plan together, this is the sort of the timeline and the process that we've been through from the left to the right side. And where we are, as you can see, all the way over here, very close to the end of the process. For those of you who might have been here in October, I was here at that first public meeting you see in the middle to give an introduction to this some months ago. In the meantime, we put together all of the items you see along the milestones along the way, different kinds of mitigation strategies, critical facilities, et cetera. I'll be talking about that in a minute. So, we've built the components of the plan over the last few months. We started last summer. And we are now arrived at the point where we have a draft plan. We're presenting it. We're rolling it out and presenting a very high-level summary of it here. That plan will be available to actually look at in detail through an online, which I'll show you in a minute, an online posting. And after this public meeting, we'll take into account whatever comments might come in over the next month or so, and then finalize the plan. And it goes to the very last step you see on the upper right after that, which means the draft plan will then be submitted to the Mass Emergency Management, MIMA, and then after that, to FEMA. It goes through a two-stage review to make sure that the plan meets all the guidelines. There's some very specific guidelines that FEMA has for what has to be in these plans. And so, it'll go through that process. So, we really are here now at the 11th hour, and we have... We're at the point where we actually have a draft plan, which we were not when I was here back in October. So, the structure of how this works is that there's a local team. And I really am just the person who's described, who gets the input from the team. But all the content and knowledge from folks you see on this list, starting with the town administrator, who actually also acted as the coordinator for the whole team, the fire department, police department, public works, planning board. We also brought in some non-municipal partners, like Essex County Greenbelt, Cape Ann Chamber. We had a couple of residents to give us a broader view of the issues that are facing the town. We really rely on this local team to bring forward their local detailed knowledge of what's going on in the town, how each of these hazards affects this town, you know, because it's very different from this town than it might be even for a neighboring town or for an inland community. And so, we are dealing with all the same topics, flooding and wind and hurricanes. But in every town, that works out to different kinds of impacts. You have different kinds of development that may be subject to these issues. You have a different history of these hazards, et cetera. So, I want to really thank the team because they sat through a series of four meetings over the last seven or eight months and really brainstormed with us and really shared their local knowledge that hopefully, all of that got put into the plan. And that's what you guys can take a look at the draft and make sure it did. And so, it's in a very important role that that local team has played, and I really appreciate the time and effort they put into it. So, let's start to look at some of what the content is actually in this plan. One of the things we begin to look at to set the table, to set the process, is what are some of the critical facilities that you have in the town? some of the critical facilities that you have in the town? And again, with the team's input, we listed out a detailed list. There's actually 48 items on the overall list. These are just a few examples here of the kinds of facilities. There are some municipal facilities. There's some basic infrastructure like pumps and wells, et cetera. And there's some community facilities like schools and senior center. I like to say we have facilities on this list that provide utility to the town, like the pumps and et cetera, and the fire department. And we have also sites on this list that might require assistance the other side of the coin. So, you know, you have schools, you have senior centers, you have places where you might need to make sure that those populations are, you're aware of where they are when there is an emergency and you know that they're a certain priority. So that's, and every site that we have inventoried is also mapped. I know at this scale you can't really see that very well, but if you look carefully, you'll see there's some little green dots peppered throughout the map, and each one of those is one of the sites. It's numbered so you can code it back to, in fact, what you can code it back to, this is what the inventory actually looks like in the plan. And this is just the first 20 sites. This goes on for a few more pages. I'm not going to like show you the whole thing on a slideshow, but I kind of wanted you to get the flavor. The different facilities are listed, each one the type of facility. And then we also have mapped these against the hazards. Are these sites in a flood hazard area or a locally identified flood hazard area? Are they in an area that might be subject to various scenarios of future sea level rise? We have a three-foot and a 10-foot scenario that's mapped out. Are they in an area with potential landslides and brush fires? So there's multiple hazards that we have mapped, and we overlay these sites on all those hazards to see which ones might potentially be subject to some of these hazards. So that's kind of what it looks like in greater detail in the plan. Like I said, there's a total of about 48 sites in the whole plan. Getting to the idea of what are the hazards and how can we map areas that are subject to hazards? Well, because flooding is the primary and most ubiquitous hazard in town, we begin with what the FEMA flood planes, that the flood insurance rate maps, the process of a nationwide mapping process that FEMA puts together using hydrological and hydraulic models to understand what areas would be subject to different levels of flooding. So there's two kinds of storms that FEMA maps the areas that would be inundated. One is called a 100-year storm and one is called a 500-year storm. And so that's obviously a latter, a pretty extreme storm. You can tell by that it's so infrequent that it might not only happen once every 500 years. And basically, the map here is showing you in this kind of middle blue color, the areas that are considered the flood plane of the 100-year storm. So the 100-year storm, even though that sounds also like not that frequent, we've actually had several of those 100-year storms in the last few decades. So it's actually better described, and usually the hydrologists do this now, instead of calling it a 100-year storm, they call it a 1% storm. Because in any one year, it has a 1% probability of occurring. And we actually have had more than one, more than a few of these in the last few decades. So obviously, there's a much larger area that would be affected by the 1% or 100-year storm. The 500-year storm is a more rare event, which would be much higher, and the areas in gold would be the areas that would be further affected if you really did have that more extreme storm. So those are the two kind of official flood planes that are mapped. And by the way, the blue, the 100-year storm is also the area that FEMA delineates. The whole purpose of those is the flood insurance rate maps. Those properties that are in that area are the ones where folks have flood insurance policies. So that's one way of getting an idea. But, you know, we know that the only, that this is not necessarily the only place in town where flooding and drainage problems can occur. There's also problems that can occur due to localized stormwater drainage problems, localized areas that may flood in high precipitation events that aren't really even mapped out at the level of FEMA. So we also asked the team to identify some of those. And I'll talk about those in a minute. Another sort of regional scale to look at is hurricanes. And we put this map together that shows the historic range of hurricane and tropical storm paths that go all the way back to the 1800s. Each, I know it's hard to read this to scale, but each of those lines is the eye of a tropical storm or hurricane that's passed by in the last 100-plus years. And you can see two of them actually went through Essex in 1944 and 1902. I think they were tropical storms, actually. But actually, the point is that, you know, hurricanes are a region-wide event. So even if the eye of the storm doesn't go through your community, if it goes past your community on, you know, a few miles to the east or west, you're still going to be very much affected by the winds and the rain. So it's a regional effect, but it just does give you a sense for sort of how frequently this region as a whole is, you know, panning out to a larger scale and looking at the whole North Shore and Eastern Mass. This is also a very, you know, not so uncommon event. We haven't had one too much lately, but, you know, wasn't that long ago that Hurricane Sandy came by and did a real number on obviously the New York, New Jersey area. We have had, we have been lucky in the Boston area and North Shore not to have a really significant one. But on the other hand, we've had our share of other kinds of storms of concern, mostly nor'easters. And we'll talk about that in a minute. So the locally identified hazard I was mentioning many ago, areas that may be of concern beyond what's mapped by FEMA. These are some of the areas that the local team identified where there's, it's usually street drainage, it's culverts usually. Sometimes it's coastal, it's also in this community, also coastal areas, low-lying coastal areas that have been, you know, sort of chronic problem areas in certain scenarios for high tides or high rainstorms. So these are a few examples of the areas that were mapped out. Again, each of these are mapped. It's hard to see on this map, but there's some little blue polygons where they are mapped. The other kind, we also mapped some other hazards here locally, one of which is brush fire potential areas. There's two of them in the red outlines you see in the southern part of town, in the more open, where you might expect it, where there's more forested and open land. And some snow and ice hazard areas as well. So these, these are all delineating and documenting local hazards that aren't documented anywhere else. You can't go to FEMA and find this information. You can't go to a state agency. You know, this is sort of uniquely and customized to Essex. And it was only brought forth through having a plan of this process and having the right people around the table who know the information. And so now with that, I'm not going to go through this in any kind of detail. I just want you to get the flavor. For each of those hazard areas, there's a description of what the problem is or has been historically. In fact, this is even a shortened down version of the full plan. This goes on for about five or six pages of description, but there's just, I put a few of them, the ones here that are probably better known to folks around here where there have been chronic and repeated problems with different kinds of flooding and drainage issues. A second page here, a few of the other areas. Probably no surprise to anyone who knows the town pretty well that these are problem areas, and the plan will actually be having some recommendations to deal with some of these. So a few before and after shots. And thanks actually to Brendan for this couple of photos he sent me. This actually turns out to be an after and before because the dry one was taken more recently, but comparing to the same area in the, one of the nor'easters of 2018. And so if you haven't recognized it, I'm sure you have, this is down by Farnham's. This is another set that was sent in to us. I appreciate the folks who send in photos. This is, you know, I call this what a difference a day make. These are just one day apart, March 2nd and March 3rd of 2018. Just a few examples of what this means on the ground for the areas that do subject, are subject to these kind of floods. As I said earlier, it's a multi-hazard plan, so it also, it's a lot of emphasis on flooding because that's kind of your primary issue, but it covers all the other hazards in the community, you know, sort of in proportion to how much of a hazard they really are for this community, but they're all covered. We look at extreme heat. We look at wildfires, which is a potential problem here and in surrounding towns. We look at geologic issues like earthquakes and landslides. The upper right is a drought map from back in the biggest drought we've had in recent decades, 2016, when almost the entire state, you see in that orange color, was in a very high level of drought warning. And then we look at extreme precipitation in the map on the lower right, US WACE map that shows the cluster of knots up in the northeast as the areas more subject to increased intensity precipitation over the last 50 years. So this is just a quick snapshot, a few of the other hazards that we go into, more detail on each one of these in the plan. And so really that leads us up to what do we do about it? Like, you know, we don't just lay out all this information about like what the hazards are without saying, okay, so what can the community do about it? And that really is the point of the plan. And so we develop a list of recommended mitigation measures. Now, your last plan from 2019 had a list like this. And what we went through with the team, we sorted through the measures that had been recommended in that plan five years ago. We found that some of them actually have been implemented since then. A few were long-term, you know, difficult to do, and they were, you might say partially implemented. You started the process and they're still in progress. And there were some that hadn't been implemented from the last plan yet. And the team looked at all of these and decided which ones were today still a priority and should those be carried into this new plan for the next five years? And if so, would they make any change to any of them? And a few of them, they may, based on more recent knowledge, they may have retained a measure from the last plan but changed it. They also could have, you'll see priority listed in the second column, they also could have reassessed the priority. It's a high, medium, and low. So this is just a snapshot of a few of, there's actually 25 measures, and this is just, I randomly picked this one page, it had items number 22, 3, and 4. And, but this is the way they're all arrayed in the plan, that the mitigation measure is described, there's a priority for each one. We talk about which local and/or in some cases, state agency is responsible for this. And we have a timeframe, usually sort of short, long term. This is a five-year, this will be a five-year plan, so 2024 to 2029. Estimated costs, sometimes we have cost estimates, sometimes it's just a broad, high, medium, and low. And are there potential grant sources that might fund some of these? So each measure has that kind of data lined up around it. So the whole list of 25 of them is right here. We don't have time in a PowerPoint to try to go, I'm not going to try to wade through all of them. But basically, we just took a quick look at more detail of those last three, 22, 3, and 4. There's a wide range of these. These address flood, they address wind, they address winter, they address fire, earthquake, they address all the categories of hazards. And there are some in there that are specifically addressed for climate resilience, thinking about some of the future. So the last thing I want to sort of leave you with is that we did circulate a public survey, an online type of survey from the last meeting in October. We posted that on the website. And we got 90 responses, which for these kind of surveys is a very good response, especially given it's a relatively small town. So very pleased to see the responses. The upper-left chart just shows that we asked which of these categories of hazards people are most rank of them, of which are the most concerned. No surprise flooding, the one on the left is the most concerned, all the way to the one on the right. So, you know, it's kind of what we thought, although I was maybe a little surprised to see the drought came in number two right after flooding. But maybe then again, not surprised since we had that drought of 16, that was followed by another drought of 19, of 20, 2019, I think, and then 2022. So we've had actually three droughts in a row in less than 10 years. So suddenly drought is on people's mind a little bit more, extreme wind events, so they're all up here in ranked. We had an open-ended question where people, there was a text box, and people could actually write something of more detail. Like we asked them, how have you actually been impacted by some of these? We got a long list of answers. I mean, this little graphic pulled out just a few representative answers, just to show. And you can see even from this, like every kind of hazard was mentioned here. Flood was mentioned, drought was mentioned, snow was mentioned, and so high winds were mentioned. So people really did touch on all these hazards. The full list is really interesting. It probably has 60 or 70 answers in it. And then the other question we asked for, what kind of strategies then to deal with these hazards do people think are the most important? And again, we asked them to rank order from a list of possible approaches. And the highest ranking ones here, you see, the first one, designing resilient green infrastructure, nature-based solutions in public open space, came in with 42 votes, not too far behind it, designing resilient infrastructure such as Rose Bridge and Billings, number 36. And then even a few more that were still leading the pack compared to the longer list, looking at public education. A lot of folks did think that was important. Sometimes that gets lost in the fray when people think about the big infrastructure projects and things, but it really is important. I'm glad to see people did value that here. Strategies that promote community social resilience and support the town's more vulnerable resources. That's great to see people understood and supported that. Because again, that's a little bit of a newer twist on these plans in recent years that hadn't always been thought about as carefully. Modeling, data analysis to project future conditions, so that's thinking ahead, not just looking back and backcasting, but forecasting and being prepared for the changes in the future. And then updating town bylaws and regulations to increase your resilience. So it's very heartening to see actually that you got a lot of support here in this survey for the kind of actions that this very plan is contemplating the town could do. And we asked them what kinds of, what kinds of measures would they like to see the town take? And you see a wide range of different kinds of things, protecting utilities, implementing green infrastructure, you know, working with property owners. So there's lots of different approaches. And again, this was just a representative sample of a much longer list of responses. So to wrap things up, I heard the bell, so I'm running a little late. Just what are the next steps in the process? Now that we have a draft plan, essentially, we're releasing the draft plan and it's being put up on a website, and I'll tell you in a minute where folks can look for that and actually download it and take a look at it in much more detail. We're asking for folks to give us comments back in about a month, by April 22nd. After that, then the town will look at whatever comments were received, make whatever final adjustments to the plan are then called for, and turn the plan in for MIMA and FEMA review. They will review, between the two of them, that takes a few months usually, but they'll get back to the town after they've reviewed it and feel like the content is, you know, is all there that needs to be there. They will at that point issue a formal notice to the town called approvable pending adoption. And that means the plan's approvable, but we need you to adopt it. And that's, that administrator's, this is the board that would adopt it. Just a simple vote of adoption. There's actually a resolution in the plan, a one-page, sort of boilerplate resolution, you know, here we hereby adopt the plan, sort of thing. And so you'll see that come back to you eventually, once we've been through all the approval process for adoption. Once FEMA sees that the town has officially adopted the plan, you'll turn that certificate and sign. They will then issue the formal approval, which comes as a letter from the FEMA Regional Headquarters in New England. And it has the approval date and the five-year later expiration date of this plan. During that five years, the next five years, the town will be eligible for these FEMA grants. And the major category of grants that is really available is called Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, BRIC, or BRIC is the acronym for that. And it's a pretty big grant program. So if you have some needs, which I think the plan has shown you do, you really will have the opportunity, I think, to consider that. These grants can easily be six-figure, if not seven-figure grants. A few little warnings, they are 75% grants, so you do have to come up with a 25% match. But 75 is a pretty good leverage, right? And that the grant applications for any one project are a heavy lift in terms of grant applications, but if you have a big project, it could well be worth it. So that's really where we are. We're in the home stretch here. And I'm actually going to put up a screenshot. If you click on the link I'm going to give you in a minute to download the plan, you'll come to this project webpage. And on the lower right-hand where it says download, when you're online, if you click that, you'll be able to download the whole plan, the whole 193 pages of it. So good luck and enjoy that if you can. We really do welcome folks to take a look through. You don't have to read the whole thing to be able to get some gist out of it and make some comments necessarily. And so this is, this is the link that will lead you to that page. It's a page on the MAPC website, mpc.org/resources-library/Essex-HMP, which stands for Hazard Mitigation Plan. So the plan will be available there. And like I say, we're asking for folks, if they would like to comment, to get us some comments back by the 22nd. We have a dedicated project email to which comments can be sent, essexresilience@mapc.org. I'll just leave this up because it has the contact information and that's.
Yeah, we'll link that onto the town's website.
We'll put all this in there. Couple of minutes over, 30 minutes, but hopefully.
Is there any other particular advertising that the town has to do with respect, or is the website generally?
Usually the town website, I mean, basically, you could send, I mean, you send out a notice about this meeting. You could send to that same list an email, you know, sort of a direct message to say, here, here's the link, and please, you know, feel free to comment. So yeah, that might be a way to enhance that a little bit. But having it up on the town's website and so people can find it easily and link right to it would be a good thing.
Martin, I'm on the team and I should probably know this, but the five-year period for grant eligibility, does that begin once it's actually approved? Or is it some arbitrary date like, you know, January 1st, 2023?
It's the date of approval. That formal letter that FEMA will send you, it will say right in the letter, you know, like July 2nd, or whenever the date of the letter. And it'll be for five years from that date into the future. Yeah. And that, so you won't know the date until you've gotten through the approval process and they mailed you that letter.
Right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you for such a thorough presentation. Very impressive.
Thank you for having me.
Did we, with the last five-year, did we take advantage of any of the grants?
Well, one of the projects that we prepared for quite a bit was the Apple Street project. And that was in the last plan. And that was, we had actually arranged for up to 90% federal funding. So we were using this plan in that case toward that project. We understand that the town does not want to take those easements, so we're going to take a look at some of the other things on that plan and look at that for the next couple of years.
I think maybe Brendan, the MVP grants that we went after, some of the flooding issues were in the old plan as well.
Yeah, they generally are good for funding that other 25%.
Yeah.
So you could actually, and this is what we were going to do with Apple Street, we were going to look for MVP. So you could potentially come out of, you know, get a project designed and so forth and come out of it at 100% funding, 25 state and 75 federal, without any town funds at all.
The other thing you could do is because some of these larger infrastructure projects have a lot of engineering and design and permitting that you have to do before you can even apply for the shovel-in-the-ground grant, that cost alone can be tens of thousands of dollars. You might be able to use an MVP grant or some other state grant to do that upfront work to get you ready for the shovel-ready grant. So yeah, if you could be a little creative about mixing and matching a few different grants, you can get a pretty big project for little or no actual town funding.
Thank you. Does the board have any other questions?
No.
No, thank you, Martin.
Thank you so much. So if anybody has any comments or would like to reach out to Mr. Pillsbury, the link will be on the town homepage. And I'm sure Town Administrator Zubricki will probably do that first thing in the morning or maybe even this evening. Thank you so much.
I'm going to skip the next agenda item and move on to reserve fund transfer.
You left it.
Actually, I'm going to wait on these because I think we're probably going to want explanations. I'm going to jump down. I will entertain a motion to vote to accept the resignation of Lisa O'Donnell from the Zoning Board of Appeals effective March 7th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to appoint Keith Carter to the Board of Appeals effective March 7th, 2024 and sign the appointment card.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to appoint Bill French as an alternate to the Board of Appeals effective March 7th, 2024 and sign the appointment card.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to appoint Michael Davis as an alternate to the Board of Appeals effective March seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and sign the appointment card.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's signature of a letter of support for the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to launch a new program studying the Great Marsh.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's signature of the Emergency Management Performance Grant contract for twenty-seven hundred dollars to defray a portion of the cost for the purchase of new breathing tanks and related equipment for the Essex Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to ratify the chairman's approval of a request by Alan McCoy to rent the Field of Dreams on Sunday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, between the hours of eight AM and eleven AM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will mention, due to the heavy rain, they actually didn't use the field the next day because it wasn't playable, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, jeez.
They didn't use the field.
That was yesterday.
I think that was the field that had the picture set, right?
No, different one.
Okay.
No, that was the baseball field.
Probably looked like that, though.
Yeah.
We received a suggestion from the superintendent of the Manchester Essex Regional School District asking if we were interested in allowing sound waves to perform during check-in at the May Annual Town Meeting. This email was circulated. The board members did see it, as well as it was provided to the town moderator, who would have the complete authority of town meeting. And he was in support of this. So is there any discussion about this? No?
Then I will entertain a motion to allow for sound waves to perform during the check-in at the May Annual Town Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to consider to appoint Joshua Heath to the position of probationary firefighter, contingent upon him passing drug and medical screening.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five health insurance rates from Maya Health Benefits Trust.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going backwards on our agenda a little bit here. The next agenda item is regarding the generator installation at one seventy-two Canomo Point Road, map one oh eight, lot zero four eight A. Brendan, if you could just give us a little bit of background.
Yes, so we have someone who leases property at that address from the town. And given that it's a substantial addition to the property, it will be important for the board to grant permission to allow that improvement to occur, along with a standard vote that is used when such approvals are made.
Is it like a whole-house generator?
Yes, yes.
Is it like for the whole summer, or?
She's a year-round resident.
So if the power goes out in the middle of the winter, she's down at Canomo Point.
So it's when the power goes out. It's not year-round using it. It's only the generator for.
Only when the grid power for utility is down.
I was a little bit confused.
I, Ruth Arperine, move to approve the installation of a generator at one seventy-two Canomo Point Road, map one oh eight, lot oh four eight A, subject to all terms and conditions of the land lease for said premises, included but not limited to articles five and nine.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we are looking at a reserve fund transfer in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for general legal expense. Brendan, if you want to just give a little history on where we are percentage-wise.
So over the years, at one point in time, the Selectment's legal budget was three-tiered. We had a sixty thousand dollar general legal budget. We had a ten thousand dollar Canomo Point legal budget, and then a five thousand dollar wastewater legal budget. And where the latter two kind of ramped down after some things were done, that would have gone from seventy-five total down to sixty. But then there was a subsequent cut made more recently. And depending on the year, if we have major cases that open up, the sixty, which is now fifty-five, is generally not sufficient. We have had a number of cases this year. We have an enforcement case with respect to housing that's, excuse me, become long and involved. And Pam, do you have the sheet for that, the approval sheet? Reserve fund transfer, because I had written some other things on there, too.
What's in the reserve fund now, do you know?
It generally was not tapped very much this year, and they usually carry at least eighty thousand dollars in it. So that should be no problem. And we have a way to replenish that at town meeting, if needed, depending on how low it is at the time. We need to sound any way to sign, so I just want to... There we go. There's probably two of them, right? You know, so I had commented that we also had a major personnel matter. We've had that Board of Health Enforcement matter. And, you know, those together, that when you start running longer-term cases, they start costing more money. And looking out and forecasting out what we expect to need by the end of the fiscal year, that's why we're at twenty-five thousand.
Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to vote to approve and submit a request for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to the general legal expense.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then next is kind of the same story, but it's regarding the town hall heating fuel. So I will entertain a motion to vote to approve and submit a request for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars to the town hall heating fuel account.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do have an unanticipated situation, but we're going to wait for the Finance Committee to join us before we talk about that. So last, we can go down to Personnel Board at this point? So before you this evening, you can see that we have a new job description for the Council on Aging, which is a Volunteer Activities Coordinator position. This is a function of, as you will recall, we had three prior positions there. We had the Council on Aging Director, we had the Assistant to the Council on Aging Director, and we had a clerk position. They eliminated the clerk position and merged that with the kind of Assistant Director position. They've kind of re-titled some of these, and in doing so, they needed more of a job description that would fit the needs in the actual description of what these volunteers or paid part-time employees were doing. So before you this evening is the new created Volunteer Activities Coordinator job description. It's pretty straightforward. I know that Town Administrator Zubricki's been in touch with the Chair of the Council on Aging to answer any questions that we have here with this job description. Kind of a pretty generic job description and not a lot of meat and potatoes. Alva, do you have any questions?
No. So this job description, did it come from the board?
It came from the Council on Aging, yes. They approved it and sent it on to the Selectment Acting in their capacity as Personnel Board for approval.
And so was the next step then to hire somebody?
Correct. So as you know, they just promoted the Outreach Coordinator to the Directorship. And then the Outreach Coordinator has now been filled, and where that person is going to be on-boarded in the next couple of weeks. And their total plan included also this position. So now that they've got the upper two positions taken care of, once they know that this job description is approved, they're going to move toward getting that position filled as well.
And we don't need to vote it. We just...
You need to vote to approve it because
We do.
in your capacity as the Personnel Board.
Okay.
All job descriptions, yes.
Are there any other questions on that? No. I will entertain a motion to approve the new job description for the Council on Aging Volunteer Activities Coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you see any reason to work on the wage and salary scale for FinCom, or?
No, because, yeah, that's not really there. Review anyway, so. Unless there were major changes, but we really don't have that.
So before you is the two-page wage and salary scale recommendations. There are generally not a lot of changes. The biggest change you'll notice is the two percent increase, which is based on the two contracts that we negotiate, which is the police contract and the Ask Me contract. They negotiated for a two percent COLA. And when the two union contracts negotiate a particular COLA, that is then laid out across the entire town departments for any of your other positions. So generally speaking, the majority of this is the two percent increase. And then on page two, you can see that we have the top line, which is the Part-Time Assistant to the Town Clerk. That was customized because we are currently utilizing a part-time assistant, given our transition phase of our accounting department. The Council on Aging Volunteer and Activity Coordinator that we just approved the job description for, that is a new position, which now needs a new wage and salary range, which is eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents to a maximum of twenty dollars and forty cents. And then down a little bit lower, Town Clerk, you can see that that was also a two percent increase, which may factor into the fact that we have sadly been provided a letter of resignation from our outgoing Town Clerk, Marie Felzani, with gratitude. But that will bump that pay up a little bit, so that will change that line. And those are all of the changes that we have before us. So are there any?
I should just mention, the Volunteer and Activity Coordinator, although it's newly listed on this wage and salary scale, it actually got approved at the Fall Town Meeting for implementation before we hit the new fiscal year. But we just would not have a new document to show. It was added in by reference.
Well, and it's important to note that the Council on Aging, so as of two thousand twenty-four, they, we now, forty percent of our makeup is for residents over sixty-five years old. So our, we have a large increase in our senior population here in town. And one of the reasons that we made sure this happened was that we adopted this on the wage and salary scale, but what they did is it actually doesn't change their budget. So their salary budget line has stayed the same. They've just been able to now incorporate these three positions that were desperately needed within their same salary budget.
Right.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the wage and salary scale for July first, two thousand twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, as presented before us this evening.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So the Assistant Animal Control, no, above that, the dog empowerment wage?
Yes.
Is that something the town pays, or is it something?
Well, we would...
So if my dog runs away?
The town pays the person that does the care of the dog during the empowerment, but then all of that money gets charged to the resident, so the town gets the money back.
Okay.
This is just the ability to pay that person. Because every time we pay someone under a particular job title, we have to have that pay listed here.
Brendan, do you want to go to the Town Administrator's report?
Sure. So the first item on the report is planning for security cameras at Centennial Grove. We do have the entire fiber optic system built out to the Grove now. This will allow the town to implement some security cameras, as well as eventually, if the town desires, could even offer Wi-Fi out there. So that system has now been installed. Town meeting approved the money to get that done. It's like a week old now. And we also have all of the equipment that is necessary for what they call light up that fiber system. And so that actually gets you to endpoints that you're able to plug different things into, like cameras. So I went out to the Centennial Grove with the camera vendor that handles the camera system at the fire and police station. Not only the cameras themselves, but the recording system that is basically a video server. And said, if we were to add cameras on and get the signals from these cameras over to the police station using the fiber optic network, what type of shape is the police system in? Because we want those signals to go to the police department. And we have found a couple of things. First, we would want to add some capacity to that system, because if you're going to be adding multiple cameras, you need a place to store that video data. In addition, the police department, over the past three years since the new facility has opened, has seen the system that came on the server, the software that came on the server initially, to be rather complicated to use and requiring frequent updates to the software, which sometimes will freeze the system, so it's actually not recording. It's no problem with the cameras. It's the way the system is interacting with the cameras. And so what they recommended is a situation where perhaps we would reflash all of the software that's in that server with some other type of software that is easier to use and that does not have those frequent update problems that we're seeing with the current vendor, which is known as Salient. There are two options, really. Reflash and prepare that server for signals coming from the Centennial Grove at the same time. Or even, since in about a year's time, we're going to be end-of-life on that server, because they only last five to seven years, maybe even take the opportunity to replace that server and bring it in with the correct software on it and handle everything. I'm getting quotes on those two options right now. But in the town meeting warrant, there is an article that would cover not only the purchase of the cameras at the Grove, but in its Article twenty-three, it will include design, installation, purchase of equipment and supplies. And then I have added upgrade of the video server at the police station as necessary in anything incidental or related there, too. So in this one article, you can cover the things that are going to be happening new at the Grove, but you can also cover whatever's necessary at the police station in order to take the signals. Right now, they're struggling with just taking care of the signals from the building they're in. It wouldn't really work too well if then you say, well, here's a bunch more on a system that you're not very happy with. So we could do it all at once. All this money can come from a fund known as the Town Technology Fund. That's where we did the fiber optic and the switchgear from at a previous town meeting. And there is ample money in that fund. That money comes from a surcharge from cable television subscribers, and that money can only be spent on things like this. So it's a perfect way to spend money in that fund. It had about ninety-four thousand in it, and now it's probably down to around seventy-four thousand, but that's still going to be, of course, more than enough to handle what we need to do. So I wanted to make sure that the board was okay with moving toward this. The article will account for it. And then when we get to town meeting, the motion can be more specific as to exactly what it is that we need to purchase.
Brendan, I have a question about the cameras and the camera placement.
Yes.
Is it mainly for the buildings, or is it also for the grounds?
So we are looking to have a system that will give you views of all four sides of every major building down there.
Yeah.
And then one overall shot of the picnic Grove area, looking over toward... I don't know if you remember where the portable toilets usually go.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be looking from the new pavilion all the way across.
Okay.
So you'll have that. And then at the cottage area, in addition to getting views around both buildings, the garage
Yeah.
and the cottage, on the utility pole, you would have also a master view of the area.
How about something inside of that, no?
Inside the building?
Yeah.
Well, we have an alarm system right now.
So is there anything that's going to show anything down at the beach if there was an?
We've actually decided not to do that
Yeah.
for obvious reasons. And I know that when there was a regional proposal that came through to put cameras in our waterfront areas
Yeah.
on the ocean, the town overwhelmingly said, no, we don't want that. They felt that They felt that it was too much of an invasion to their privacy. So we are not planning on getting images of anything past the top of the knoll there, where you walk down the hill to the beach, you'll see that, but you will not see down the hill or onto the beach.
Okay.
That's our current plan. So is the board in favor of continuing to pursue that?
Sure.
I'm in favor, and I'm just kind of putting it on the record that I'm in favor of replacing the server and not putting a Band-Aid on, so we get to end of life.
And we're getting the quote on that, yeah.
Okay.
So now to the next item, which is an update on the downtown decorative lighting project. At the last meeting, I explained to the board that out in the field, when our contractor started to excavate holes with a vacuum excavation tool for the light pole bases, it was unfortunately fraught with conflicts to utilities. There's a Verizon duck bank and a gas line which meander through that area. Now, I went back and checked the recommendation of our engineering firm on the placement of these light poles. And it's even in our contract that they said back of curb would be best, because there's likely not going to be any conflicts with utilities. Well, we've found different. And I do have to say that the engineering firm did base their work on an as-built plan from the Mass DOT that was not a digital as-built plan. Nonetheless, they made a pretty significant statement there, and it doesn't appear like it's going to work out. At present, I am waiting for an answer from the Mass DOT, which made a grant for the materials involved with this lighting, the light poles and the lanterns. And we're hoping that they will cover that and allow the town to store those materials, possibly for use in another area of the town at some other point in time. And if we get that taken care of, we will take ownership of that. I've even asked the state, okay, will you cover the cost of these, even if you want to use them somewhere else? And they're looking at that as well. The town costs would only include, at this point, the pre-purchase of the light bases, which the contractor had to do many months ago because of the way we were staging the project. And we have decorative plaques that were to be placed in the sidewalk at different locations near each of these light poles that the town pre-purchased. And it would make sense to still put those into the sidewalk, and we could pay our contractor to take out each concrete section of sidewalk, which you would have to have done anyway if you were doing the whole project, and embed the ships plaques, the names of Essex-built ships, in the new pore of each one of these sections of concrete.
Is the placement of those in the section going to change, because the lights are not going to be in those? Or they put them right in the middle, or is that where they were always going to go?
They're going to go in the middle, and in some cases, there's already a junction box in that same section, but so we'll have to, we'll have to put the...
Right. Move it around.
We'll have to move it around a little bit, but otherwise, we're talking about breaking up even additional sections of concrete, which would be an additional cost.
So are we now talking, using what's already been broken up and just, since there's all those?
Yeah, they made the cuts.
The cuts?
So we're talking about breaking up that particular section, because you could either patch the cut, or you could just break up the whole section, which is what you'd have to do, and place the thing, and then you're getting both done at the same time. And so town money would be spent on that, but it would have been spent on that anyway as part of the project. And that's where I am with it. I still don't have all the answers, and I'll keep updating the board on progress.
And the liability to us, other liabilities, like, are we going to be able to get the grant to pay off what we did pay for?
That's my hope, but the person that could really answer that question has been on vacation, and we were told that we hope to get an answer from DOT this week. So at your next meeting, I'll have another update for you. Any other questions on that? And then the last item in my report is the final version of the license for the Essex Bay Sailing Club that the board wanted me to make some final revisions to. So I've provided that to the board with those revisions, the discussion.
So the only part that I have the comment on, and I'm fine with keeping it for now, but I just, the termination part, you know, if I rent something and then decide not to show up, and a lot of times, I have to, it's a non-refundable fee. And I just, you know, so for future, if we don't want to change it now, I just say...
We can. I mean, it's not been signed.
We can, absolutely.
Absolutely, whatever you want to do with it.
Take out that sentence.
And then the other thing that I was questioning was, we're in the second sentence, paragraph where it says, at the last sentence, the town will refund the licensee the fee for the each individual rental day, not, I mean, even if we decide to terminate, I feel like it should just be a percentage, not for each day? That just seems like...
Can you show me where, which one?
Yeah, sure. It's the very last sentence.
In that same section, terminating.
Yeah, in that same section.
Yeah. So basically, what Ruth said and what you're getting at, Alva, is if we take out that sentence, were you also talking about 30 days termination? Or you're just saying, just, there's no rebate? Take out the last sentence?
I think, I mean, I'm fine with saying, you know what, if they give us a 30-day refund. We weren't going to make money off that spot anyways. I'm fine with doing a refund, but I just wanted to, I didn't want to feel like we had to give money back, because a lot of times, you don't have to.
Right. And it's not, it's not an inordinate amount of money.
It's not a huge amount of money, exactly.
So I don't see any problem with...
I think we just completely delete the last sentence.
I don't see any problem with removing that. And then we can offer it to the sailing club with that out, and probably, I would say, have them sign it after they've taken the boats out of there, so that it kind of starts fresh, right?
Right.
So that's, and I would bring it back to you to sign after that has happened.
And the sailing club knows of the 250, because at one point, you know, any amount was going to be...
Yeah, that's not going to be a problem.
Yeah, okay.
So I will, do you want me to vote to at least approve the language of the license? Or do you want to wait until the boats are out, and then we actually do the license?
Yeah, why don't I do that? We'll wait.
Okay.
We'll wait until they're gone, and then you're starting a new cycle.
It is 7:38, and I see that the finance committee just joined us. So whoever your spokesperson is, the chair or the chair and co-chair, want to join us? Actually, come to the table, Jody, and why don't I have you sit? Oh, did we disconnect that?
No, that's still...
Okay, you want to sit with us, so that you can be on camera and facing?
Hands down.
Sure. Grab two chairs and just slide that closer.
Did the town win Mega Millions? No?
I'm here to report that the town did not win anything.
Did the town invest?
I plead the fifth. Depends on who the town is, right? Are you ready, Madam Chair?
Please, the floor is yours.
Okay. So the FinCom just met and voted unanimously to recommend a town budget of $9,339,085.22. We brought to you the school budget prior and the capital budget as well. The capital budget changed slightly. There's, there was one, one change, the TASER quote changed a bit. And I also spoke to the chief about the tax that we were being charged, and he said that we would not be paying the tax. So we removed the federal excise tax from that quote, giving us, that's the number I have here, $164,931 for capital items, the defibrillators, the tasers, and the truck for the water and sewer department funded through the enterprise funds. Additionally, the finance committee has discussed a budget change in the process of voting for the town budget annually that we'd like to propose. We're exploring changing the budget presentation to include the line item detail, but add an additional page to the finance committee budget book that identifies labor costs and expense costs by department. We would continue to give the detail in the back of the finance committee book, but the vote itself would be on that box. This would allow the department heads to actually spend their budgets within labor and expense. They could overexpend or underexpend without having to come to the finance committee for a line item transfer as required by the DOR currently. I think the finance committee and department head spend a lot of time filling out paperwork that most times is the horse out of the barn, the expense has been paid, and then they ask for forgiveness in a line item transfer to satisfy the DOR. This change, in our opinion, would help for transparency in budgeting moving forward, because when you do a line item transfer, you're actually changing the budget. And when you change the budget, that budget just moves forward into the next year, and they budget on the newly created budget. Instead, Ben likes to call them the ragged edges. We want to see the ragged edges of the budget and see where there are overspending or underspending and why, so we can more appropriately help them budget for the next fiscal year. There would be a materiality clause where if they had a, an over expenditure of, say, more than $5,000, they would need to come to the finance committee to discuss what that, that change is. The big change is, would be in our operating procedures on the finance committee. Right now, we meet with department heads once a year for budgeting. Our proposal is that we will be meeting with them at least quarterly, looking over their financials, looking at their line items, see where they're underspent, overspent, looking at their, their actual expenses and having conversations, so the finance committee can better understand what they're, what they're doing, if they have stressors in their budget, if they're short, if they need a wage and salary change. And instead of using the money because they don't want to lose it, we can have conversations about where we may, they may spend their money in better places. So if they're having hiring challenges, and that's a wage and salary issue, that could be discussed, as opposed to expending the money just to expend the money. Anything to add, Ben?
The only thing that I would say is that this is, this is not something that we have recommended implementation for this existing town meeting that is closely upon us. So this is looking toward next year's budget cycle. So we would defer to the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, and General Counsel on the implementation of this, because it is, it's a proposed change. So, and that's what we discussed. Someone on the committee had, you know, said it would be helpful to see what the exhibit would look like, that residents would be voting upon, which makes total sense. So we didn't take a formal vote. We were previewing this as a recommendation going forward. Did you want to talk about some of the income or the revenue opportunity discussions that we had?
Sure. I think that additionally, the finance committee wants to review some of the maybe missed revenue opportunities. I think on economic development committee, we've looked at some of these. We want to review some more revenue opportunities, because as we know, our 2.5% plus our new growth doesn't really move the needle forward for the town. You know, this year, they budgeted flat and got their 2% COLA, but we're not actually in a growth cycle with funding the school budget. So we want to look at revenue opportunities. We want to do some review of policies on the finance committee. Basically, I think we're going to be doing a little bit of a reset on the finance committee on, you know, what we're doing for work, how we're doing it, what the process looks like, and how we can work more closely with department heads and administration. So I think we have a lot, I think we have a lot on our plate. The, what Ben was talking about is, you know, previewing what that, that consolidated budget might look like, and seeing if we can actually slide that into our finance committee book this year, so that it, you know, it's new, but we're still voting as we did, you know, every other year, and then...
Just label it as sample, you know, something, make sure that it's not understood by someone before they get to town meeting as what you're doing, it's a caveat appropriately.
Exactly. But it would tie back to this year's budget, so that they would understand it.
And you would say, next, next year, we would like to bring this to you, but without the line item, you're not voting on the line item budget.
You're not voting.
You may still even, you may still have that in the booklet.
I would, I prefer to have it in the booklet. I think that, you know, the voting on labor versus expense as a total budget is, bless you, you know, is a more streamlined and more efficient way to manage our town departments. But I do believe that people are owed the transparency of the line item budget. And we would still be doing line item accounting, the line item budget on a daily basis, that doesn't change. It would simply be the, the change in labor versus expense, so that we're not spending our finance committee meetings signing 35 line item transfers, because there's a lot of other work to be done.
Does, does any, like, do you anticipate any training being required for the department heads to understand it better, or do you think that they already have that?
I think they understand it pretty well. I floated this with the department heads that I met with, which were the larger departments, police, fire, and DPW, and they all welcome it, actually. I think that it's more of a real-world way of accounting. I think the DOR regulations sort of, you know, force you into making line item transfers and changing budgets, and it's very complicated to try and unwind that when you get to the next budgeting cycle. So they were, everybody I spoke to was embracing it. Again, it's giving the department managers their budget to manage within labor and expense, and then a tool for the finance committee to help better, to build better budgets for the future.
Are any of the departments so efficiently run that they don't need this quarterly review? Or they all, there are too many things, nuances, changes that happen during the year that, because it can become onerous if you've got to go through this every quarter.
I think that there are smaller departments that probably don't need to be scrutinized, but I think, in the spirit of it, I think we'd like to start meeting with everybody and then, and see how it goes. I've also met with the town accountant, and we have some reporting, new reporting structures, if you will, to get monthly reports out to department heads, so that they can see what they're actually spending versus their budget, what their run rate is. I think those are incredibly important. I think that there are more ways to provide department heads with data, that they don't have to do as much tracking on their end, if they had the appropriate reports coming out. So I think we need to work with the current town accountant and our future... So I think we need to work with the current town accountant and our future town accountant in setting up policies and procedures on reporting so that we can stop some of the redundancy. There's a lot, I think there's a lot of redundancy, you know, checks and balances where they can be in different places and done more efficiently.
Thank you.
So for me, thank you, thank the entire Finance Committee for all of the hard work. I know that I've been at the meetings, and you guys have undertaken a lot, and there's been a lot of really great changes, so thank you for all of that. Just to speak to a couple of these little items, I want to say that the idea of the two, the two-line system is not new. This was actually presented, I've been in meetings where department heads love this idea, but we owe it to the voters to have some advance notice. So I love that you guys are doing this for fiscal '26 so that we can get, spread the word and start having those conversations and take good feedback. Equally, one of the things that I've heard from department heads, and I think this is a really important comment, Peter, when you say, like, isn't going in quarterly a lot, will the department heads currently feel like, they come in, the Finance Committee comes in once a year, and they feel like it's almost the firing squad, like, oh, God, they're coming to cut the budget? And I think building this relationship of going in quarterly, even if it's not quite quarterly, but it's enough that it's a friendly face, and they're actually looking to support the budgets and not just coming in to cut them, I think that matters. And with quarterly check-ins, you can work with the departments and say, oh, you have needs here. And I, having gone through this budget season with the Finance Committee, they actually have two, at least one department, no, two departments, where additional funds have been needed in that department, and they advocated for those additional funds. One I know is the legal line item for the Board of Selectmen. And so they advocated for those, knowing that those were a real genuine need, and hearing the backstory about why it's needed, there was support versus just the, you know, always feeling like you're going into cuts. So I think that's wonderful, and I embrace that. I have no other comments, just a lot of gratitude for the work you guys have done. So, and Madam Chair, do you want to confirm the number before we take a motion? It's nine million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any other questions? Vernon, do you have anything?
I do not. I think it will work very well to let the public know and any department heads that don't know about this new concept, to move toward, you know, a system that many other communities already use, but to do that over with ample warning, and I think that's probably the best way to proceed. That's prudent.
Agreed. No comment.
What was that?
I said, I agree. No comment.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the town operating and capital budgets, including the school budgets, for a total of nine million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents, as recommended by the Finance-
That doesn't include the school budget? You were just talking about the-
Oh, you're right.
It does not.
Sorry.
Yep. They were here to talk about all of those potential topics, but the discussion so far-
Is just town operating-
The number, yeah, and the school budget, we have that number, if you want to know what that is.
Let's put it into the motion.
That was approved on March 7th.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Have the actual statement from the Treasurer.
If you want me to, I can go. Now, the Selectmen taking a vote on it is not a legal requirement. The enterprise funds, yes. But on just generally saying you're in favor of these budgets, it's just the pleasure of the Board expressing that.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the Finance Committee's recommendation for the town operating and capital budgets of nine million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was just the town budget.
That was just the town budget.
Nine three three nine oh eight five point two two.
Yes, nine three three nine.
That does not include capital. Yeah, you said capital.
Just checking. Let me do it again.
Sorry.
The capital was an additional one-
The capital was one sixty-four nine thirty-one.
Correct.
My apologies. So town, nine million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand eighty-five dollars and twenty-two cents, and capital, one sixty-four nine thirty-one.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think you've already said that you support the school budget.
We did.
Yes.
I think all of my notes all over this need to be cleaned up.
Clear as mud.
Clear as mud.
The devil's in the details.
Yeah. As Christopher has told us, devil is in the details, Christopher. Okay.
So you could take the official vote that you do need to take, which is the approval of the subset of the town budget known as the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and you have copies of those before you-
Can we do those as one vote together?
Yeah.
Yep. So I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the fiscal year 2025 Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund budgets to annual town meeting.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Finance, so we're going to go into, well, bear with me one second. Are you going to review every article?
I don't need to. I was going to go with some highlights, and that's it.
Okay. So we don't, we are not going to go through every single article of the warrant. The Finance Committee is welcome to stay with us if they want to, they don't have to, if they have commitment, but I am going to ask if Nina and Jody can stay. We have something unanticipated that I want to review with just Nina and Jody before the meeting adjourns, if you can both stay with me for a little while.
Okay.
I don't think it will be that long.
It won't be that long. Okay.
So we want, but the Finance Committee can adjourn?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you. All in favor? Mark, that wasn't fast.
Do you want Nina now?
Sure.
You can do it now, and then we'll just do this.
Nina, do you want to come join us? Thank you, FinCon members.
Thanks, Ben.
Have a good night.
So was this added today?
Okay. Came in today.
So under unanticipated items, the Board keeps a placeholder for anything that could not be reasonably anticipated within our law requirements of posting, you know, the forty-eight hour posting deadline. So as of today, I've been in communications with the Superintendent of the Manchester Essex Regional School District. So as the Board is aware and the Finance Committee members are aware, the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee has put out a request for Board representatives as well as resident representatives for the Essex Elementary School Building Committee. So the MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Authority, has invited Manchester Essex Regional School District into the process. So we're going to be heading down the road of feasibility and looking at the potential build of a new Essex, or either renovation or a rebuild of the Essex Elementary School. So the request from the School Committee was for Board members to identify themselves with letters of interest. So the three, this was put out in an email to the Board of Selectmen to see if they wanted to represent. I myself do want to sit on the School Building Committee, and I know that Chair Harris and Finance Member McKinnon have also sent in letters of interest. So in communications today with the Superintendent, the reason we're doing this unanticipated is that they need an answer before our next meeting on April 8th. So the discussion at the table is, who's going to represent the Town of Essex as a Board Representative? We can only have one. So this is why, this is unanticipated, and I invited you to the table because we have three of us that are Board members that are interested in serving. I want to hear just a little bit about your reason for wanting to serve and who we think amongst the three of us thinks is going to be the best fit, so.
Well, Ruth, before you go into that, is it, is it a board that will be representing or an individual that represents for that board? Because if somebody goes off the board, then what do you do? Is it automatic, somebody else from that board goes on, or how will that work?
I'm going to defer to Beazee because he's been through the last two projects.
They're just looking for a single representative.
Just a single representative.
So it, but I mean, what I'm asking is-
Is if I go off the Board of Selectmen in a year, will someone take my place?
Yeah, is it automatically, somebody from the board will take that over?
No, not necessarily.
Yeah, okay.
Not from this, it could be, because you're looking for somebody to represent the town.
Okay. All right.
So, a lot of information. Thank you for your patience, and how do we feel? Do we want to roll the dice?
To be honest, I did not realize, when I put in my letter of interest, I was doing it as a community member, as a parent of a student, as someone who obviously has been involved with the school in a broader sense. So I was not realizing it was a formal representation from the Board.
Okay, so I think, I know that tomorrow starts the interview process with resident representatives. So maybe, Nina, if you don't want to do this as a Board Representative, send off an email to Pam this evening saying that you, your letter was more of a resident representative, and they can fit you into the interview queue of residents instead of-
Do I count that way because I'm on a board?
You can. Yeah, I'm sure you can.
I don't know.
I don't think I said-
No, I think it comes down to what a person is being designated as, not just because you happen to have membership on some other board in the community. Going in as a resident representative is not the same as being designated as the town's official representative from the town government, even if you do have affiliation with town boards and committees.
I'm happy to make that clear from point. I was not trying, I was not running to, unless you all would like me to be, but I was not running to try to be a Board Representative.
No, no, it wasn't that. I think that the three of us just-
No, 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 but I'm just saying, without us going through it, like, I was just as an interested community member.
Okay. But I think it leaves us still in the same quandary because we have three, so if Nina, so Nina, I do know that there are several of the members of the community that have put in letters of interest are in the trades, they're either engineers or architects or plumbers or electricians, they're in the construction-type trades. So I don't know, I think it comes back to the same thing, is that as a representative, you're probably going to be better as, if we talk about as a Board Representative versus a resident, because I think that a lot of what they're looking for from backgrounds are going to be representative already. So I kind of come back to the same point, is I think that between the three of us, we need to figure out who is the most qualified or the best kind of all-around person to serve, so.
I'll go next. You can think about that. Since you're on the spot.
Sorry, Nina.
I simply put in my name as a Finance Committee member and a longstanding school supporter and original regionalization committee member and original school committee member on the first school committee. I have no municipal building experience. I think, Madam Chair, you have some municipal building experience, and I think that you would represent the town well. I will gladly withdraw my name, and I would be happy to support you to fill the seat. I have a lot to do on the Finance Committee.
Nina, how do you feel about that? So I'm-
I'll be able to withdraw my name if you want to do it.
Well, that was quick and easy. I guess I made that really painful for nothing. So I would be thrilled to represent the town. I put in my letter of interest because I am actually interested, I'm very excited about the project, I'm passionate about it, and I feel that I do bring some qualification to the table. I'm not a contractor, I'm not an architect, and I'm not an engineer, but I'm passionate about the project, and I did sit through the, almost the entire, well, no, the entire building project for the Public Safety Building, starting out as a resident that went to every meeting, and then it's actually the reason that I ran for the Board of Selectmen, was being part of that entire process. And then I was lucky enough to be the chair during the project and got to deal with every single aspect of it day to day. So I do have-
And she still wants it.
And I'm, well, and I'm still actually dealing with it, so.
Yeah, we are.
We are. So I would be flattered and honored to be able to represent the town in such an awesome project, so if you're both okay with that.
It's perfect.
They were hoping, I think.
No, not at all. I think, I'm very excited about this project. This is the, I've said it every time I've spoken, I'm going to say it again, this is the final pillar of what regionalization was intended to be. We've, Essex has patiently waited and to be last in the building process, and I'm very excited to look forward to whatever this new project is because this is a fulfillment of everything we started out to achieve back from nineteen ninety-nine, Jeff? A long time ago, when we were young.
Are you still young?
No, I think that as long as there's no objection from the Board, this could be set up for vote of ratification on your April 8th agenda, so it could be listed for the public, and in the meantime, you could report back that you're going to be the representative, unless there's some kind of objection.
None from me.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Have a fabulous evening. Okay. And Town Administrator Zuberke, if you-
So now we'll talk about the town meeting warrant. And I'm just going to highlight, the first articles up to Article 13 are dealing with articles of a general nature, including the budgets. When we get to Article 14, this is where the Planning Board zoning proposals begin, and they go down through Article 20. And there's a variety of things that the Planning Board is trying to accomplish at this town meeting, kind of as a culmination of the work that's been done over the past couple of years, and there's, hopefully would be additional consideration of zoning changes even in November. Right now, our position with the Office of the Attorney General on the moratorium for conversion of vacant or residential to commercial or industrial is that the Office of the Attorney General asked for and received an extension of time on indicating whether that moratorium should stay in place, because it was voted at a town meeting, but as you know, the Office of the Attorney General has to approve it. And my understanding is that the Chair of the Planning Board is going to provide Town Council with a history of where we started, why we're doing this moratorium, and Town Council has spoken to the Office of the Attorney General and feels that with that summary, the Office of the Attorney General will approve the moratorium to go through the end of this calendar year, but we don't think it will ever go beyond that.
Beyond that, correct.
Okay? And so there are several zoning articles here. Article 14 is talking about an amendment to an existing table.
So this is a table that's in there, and this is just an amendment to it?
Yeah, this is the downtown ex- district that currently sits between zero and twenty-five feet, and with a recent application, they realized that that zero-foot setback is problematic, so they'd like to amend that to read seven to twenty-five feet so that you don't have new building projects sitting literally on the sidewalk.
Article 15, they're going with a purpose and intent section that our, a more complete, let's say, a more complete purpose and intent section than what we've had in the past. And the reason they're doing this is that when it comes down to appeals and court actions and such, courts do look at this, and we felt that we really didn't have anything of substance. Yeah. Article 16 talks about how, let's see, this one, I want to make sure I have my bearings on it. Yes, so this was a new idea, which we've seen in other towns, and the town plan or the new town plan brought it to the town's attention, that you can say things like, look, unless it says you can do it, you can't do it. And it's actually kind of closing the door on things that might slip through because it's not well-defined. So that's another thing that got added. Article 17 has to do with special permit uses and the addition of certain other special permit categories that weren't already in there. And the thought about amending the special permit section is, if you, if the concern was that uses are going to come in, in areas that are currently vacant or open, which is why we did the, or at least residential, which is why we did the moratorium, one strategy you can employ to ensure that whoever wants to come into one of those areas plays by a set of criteria, and it just doesn't happen by right, which is what we would have now, is by kind of beefing up that section and adding to the list of things that require special permits. Of course, the other thing you can do is- Of course, the other thing you can do is actually usher in specific zoning districts. But we don't think we're gonna see that until the fall town meeting. And then the moratorium expires and then you hope you have in place what you had set out to do. Article 18 is the Planning Board looking back at the cell tower bylaw. It's actually personal wireless service facilities. Taking what's in there right now and really expanding on it. You might remember, this came before the town meeting in the past. And the Planning Board felt that it should have another discussion at the town meeting, so here it is. And that takes you to Article 19, which is, and in speaking with the Chairman of the Planning Board, adult entertainment use has to be allowed in the town. You can't say that it's not allowed, but you can determine where it should go and what's appropriate. And so this is a way to put that in there before that type of use just crops up and there's really nothing to control it or direct it appropriately. And then, let's see, okay, so, and this is where a list of other, Article 20, of those other special permit categories is...
So in the adult entertainment, can you limit it so much that it doesn't go anywhere? You have to have a place for it?
It has to be plausible, okay?
Yeah, okay.
But that's not really, okay, so the Office of the Attorney General may look at it and if they feel that it's not plausible on its face, they'll kick it back. If they feel like, okay, looks like it could go somewhere, then it would be, really be tested if someone came in and they said, "I wanna cite right here what you have in your bylaw, that, you know, I'm gonna argue against that. I'm going to challenge that."
Right, right.
And then I wanna jump all the way to the bottom. Today, we had a petition article come in. It's from people who support an event known as the Essex River Race. And they've put, they've gotten the necessary number of signatures from registered voters. And you see the language that they have here. I did explain to the proponent that came in that the board just went through the development of a policy and a rental agreement for actually using the town landing for special purposes such as this. But they felt that they still wanted to get it on the town meeting warrant. So it is on their verbatim. And in the coming weeks, as we start talking about what motions are gonna look like and reviewing the town, getting ready with Town Council for town meeting, I'm sure he'll give you an opinion on what this means, whether it is something that is binding upon the Board of Selectmen or something that's just, if it should pass, is it just something that's guidance for the board? Which I think the latter is probably what we'll find out that it is because it is not a proposal to create or alter a bylaw, right? And it's also not a proposal to make an appropriation, which are really the two things that town meeting does. Instead, it appears to be having town meeting direct the executive branch, the Board of Selectmen, to do something which is not normally the role of town meeting.
I'm sorry, did you ask council? I mean...
Yes, we, I did ask council and he's tending toward the latter, that it would set up as guidance. But since it only came in today, he wanted more time to collect his thoughts and get back to the board with a more formal explanation.
Because I can't really like reading this. What does this mean?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, it says utilizing Essex Town Ramp Access Point and other support. Does that mean other Town of Essex support?
I really don't know.
At our cost?
Because we had to take it the way it was written, verbatim, and drop it on the warrant under state law.
Yeah.
I have no idea what's behind it. I mean, they give a description, so to the extent that that gives you an idea of what they're looking for. Generally, with petition articles, it comes to the floor and the Selectmen don't volunteer any particular motion reader. Somebody would get up and I guess they'd have to explain it. And that's if Town Council doesn't get up first and say, "This may not be in order."
Right.
And so we're going to get that whole analysis from him. We don't have that broken down for you yet.
Yep.
It may not even be in order. I don't know yet.
Yeah.
And if it is in order enough to stay on there and it's voted in the affirmative, I believe it'll only just be non-binding guidance, non-binding guidance for the board. That's my current understanding.
Okay.
Peter, I don't know the answer. I had nothing to do with this petition. But I would say where it says "in other support", I would assume since for many years now, they coordinate this with the Huberman Master and the Police Department and all that, I think they're looking to use Essex.
Resources.
Right, support staff.
And, yeah, never mind. I've already made my viewpoint about this multiple times.
Well, it's a citizen's petition, so we don't get it. We get to put it on there exactly as it is.
So there is a lot of stuff in the zoning aspect of this and I, I just wonder, have, you know, have we looked for it to see whether or not, like I want it to pass if, you know, these things are needed. So I think the whys, we need to really make sure get promoted because you know how zoning can be. Sometimes they go right through and other times it's two hours of argument, well, sorry, two hours of discussions.
Right, so far, in the initiative that was started after the moratorium went in place, so far, all of the things that the Planning Board has put in front of the voters have passed. Hopefully, the explanation follows suit. They're gonna have a public hearing as required by state law prior to town meeting. There'll be a chance for people to give input there as well. But they're, so far, they're two for two. There was nothing that they put up in those two prior meetings that didn't pass.
There's meat in this one.
Yeah, so each time they come back, the stakes are up a little bit higher. And by the time we get to fall town meeting, they might be talking about a formal zoning district in someone's neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that's where it gets really personal to some people. Well, that's where I live, or whatever have you, so.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on the warrant? No. Mr. Moderator, do you have any questions on the warrant? Not tonight, okay. I know we'll have more meetings about this, but thank you for joining us. Okay, I will entertain a motion to vote to add articles to the annual town meeting warrant as shown on the draft document.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to close the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will vote to sign the warrant.
That's it.
That's it.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have one other unanticipated item. We had another commercial clamor come into the office today. He and his wife have had commercial licenses for several years. And he mentioned that he missed the deadline. The deadline for applying for a commercial clam permit is the first Monday in March. It's been that way ever since he's had a license. But he just mentioned, you know, we missed it this year. And he requested that not only would he get his license in time for the April 1st renewal, where you need a new license if you're gonna continue, but also that the board waive the late fee. Now, I can tell you, the history here is we used to have a lot of people come in and there was no late fee. And when they came in late, they would just say, "Well, I'm coming in just to waive, ask you to waive the application deadline. Please let me to continue clamming." And the board did that, but at one point, the board said, "But there's no consequence. We don't really wanna have them stop..."
Doing their livelihood, yeah.
"...but we also don't want this revolving door of people coming in late." And so that late fee was put in for that reason. And ever since the late fee was put in, anyone who was late was charged a late fee. That much I know. So my question is, and this can be ratified at your next meeting, are you, I do have an application for him, Julian and his wife, Yula? Yoka. They, this will go in through the town clerk, but I was given this today. They do have, they're both on the real estate deed.
How much is the late fee?
It's 200. So instead of paying 400, which is the regular price, it's 600 apiece. $200 each because there's too late applications here. But it's either that or you wait until the next board meeting to figure if the board doesn't wanna act on it now and there's still a late fee involved. So the question is whether or not the board wants to wait till the next meeting, which would be like an eight-day work stoppage for these two people? Or do you want to allow them to do it now and ratify it at the next meeting? And I assume you want them to pay the late fee and not waive the late?
So I'm in, I'm in favor of allowing people to continue with their livelihood. I realize it was an oversight and probably a costly one. We know that there is a deadline. Every other commercial shell fisherman that comes to us with an application has done so. So I believe that everyone was afforded the same opportunity. And I know that we've signed his license for many years in a row. So I know that he knows the deadline as well. But I don't wanna see him, or them, or anybody, not be able to make money from April 1st to April 8th. I think that's unreasonable. But I do believe that the late fee was implemented for a reason. And I think this is the perfect example that, you know. So I would be in favor of approving it so that they can continue to make money in ratifying it on the 8th. The only thing I noticed, Brendan, just as you flipped that open, is it does not look like the town clerk has seen it or verified some of the info.
No, because it just was given to us this afternoon.
It was given to you directly, okay.
So I wanted to bring what they gave and then it needs to go. I looked at it. If you look through there, you'll see the different things that they provided.
So that would need to be...
Yeah, a bigger check.
I agree with Ruth.
Yeah, because it puts us in a spot. We've been trying to...
And the others will do the same thing.
Accountability in, we can't keep going, "Well, we'll give him a break this time and that time and..."
He gave us the wrong copy of your license?
Okay.
This is your license?
And I'm looking for state licenses, which I have. So the only thing that's not complete really is the fact that the town clerk has not certified whether or not they've passed an assensus. So after, so everything is complete except that, but she'll take care of that.
But I believe that that's going to be the case. There's enough here for you to act on.
There's enough, yes. There's enough here. Everything is in order except the census information, which she'll make sure she takes care of. We can even make that contingent. But is everyone comfortable with that idea?
Sure, yep.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the 2024 commercial shellfish permit applications for Julian Balili and Yoka Balili. Contingent upon, with the late fee assessed, contingent upon the town clerk certifying the census information. And we will ratify this at the April 8th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any public comment this evening? Everyone in the room has left us, so we're gonna go to online. If there's anybody with public comment, please unmute yourself, give your name and address and you can speak now. Annie, it looks like you may have unmuted, but I can't hear you.
Yeah, Joan, make sure that this is turned up.
Annie, if, can you hear me, Annie?
Shake your head.
I can't see her.
I know.
Chat.
Yeah, just chat, Annie. Say hi. I was trying. I can see her green dots moving, but we're not hearing her. Annie, can you go over to the chat and send us a quick message?
Tina can hear.
Oh, and Tina says she can hear Annie. Annie, bear with us, hang on. Tina, can you unmute and speak? Let me see if I can hear you. Okay, and we can't hear Tina, Tina. This one was unplugged before, but it's in there.
She said she will email?
Chat.
Email, go home.
Oh, email, go home. Okay, Annie, thank you. I apologize, technical difficulties. Tina, if you have public comment, please send it via email and my apologies. Okay, it's 8:25. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. And Annie wants us to invest in software.
We have this problem.
Yes, thank you, Joan.